All right. I'd like to call this budget work session to order. And at this point in time, I would like to receive any member comments.
Can we just check for quorum really quick, David?
Yes.
That's my bag.
Sherry, are you on the line with us?
I just spoke with her. She's about to-
Call in, okay, because you have, there are only four of you and we can't get started until we get-
I just hung up the phone, so she should be dialing in any time.
And I think Eric might be calling in. And Julie, I would admit, I believe is coming to the meeting, I haven't heard otherwise. Good question. Sherry's probably going to be sending out a note to you all, but that is going to need to be rescheduled, so.
That's fine.
Now that we have a quorum-
Hey Eric, how are you?
Hi Eric.
Good.
Now that we have a quorum, we can get started. First order of business is to receive member comments.
And Fred, you just need to, in just one moment, you put in the sign and sheet there.
Okay, and the chair would recognize Ken Fredgren. If you could just identify yourself for the record and give us your comments, please.
Sure. Good evening all. I'm Ken Fredgren, and I serve as chairman of Reston Accessibility Committee. We're partners with owners and property managers with goodwill and good faith for the common good. We call our three G's. Most often those contacts respond in kind. Volunteers contributing to Pony Barn Park Working Group, but contributed hundreds of hours of service-
To the Pony Barn-
-to the project over the last few years. I've been told- I've been told that the improvements being discussed and planned since 2013-
...14. Even the recently scaled down improvements will not be funded.
Besides being decrepit overall, the park is not accessible to people with mobility disabilities. Nine years ago, not having visited the park, I rolled the one and a half blocks from my home to the park in my mobility scooter along with-
Adult daughters and grandchildren.
My scooter sank in the gravel-
And my family had to hoist me out and carry me from the gravel and then laboriously pull the scooter out of the gravel.
Worth Hill's picnic pavilion, where Ken Plumboles, who's annual family picnic and fundraiser, is a palace compared to-
Pony Barn Park. And it's accessible to people using mobility devices. The stark difference- The stark difference is embarrassing. Given it's inaccessible for me, I haven't returned to, I hadn't returned to Pony Barn until a Sunday last month, when I drove to the park and discovered that the gravel was no longer as deep, but still gravel. The pavilion is still up a grass slope too steep for any mobility device. Wheelchairs, power chairs, scooters, walkers, crutches, canes. In addition, the pavilion floor is mulch, as is the surface of the tot lot with its two swings. Mulch surfaces are a safety hazard for people with disabilities. The Americans for Disabilities Act, or Civil Rights Act for my people, specifies that public accommodations must be accessible to people with disabilities. Besides paying a hefty Fairfax County real estate tax, we all pay ever increasing RA dues. The Department of Justice did an accessibility audit of Fairfax County facilities in 2011, and required several government facilities to make accessibility improvements. Reston Community Center, Hunters Woods, had to renovate the existing lobby restrooms, add a fully accessible restroom in the hall leading to the rear entrance, add automatic door openers, and replace the lobby water fountain. Speaking of RCC, RAC is responsible for negotiating the addition of four accessible parking spaces close to RCC in the Hunters Woods Village Center parking lot in the period 2011-2012. That's one of 32 projects since 2008. RAC worked with Milton Matthews to have inaccessible parking spaces installed outside these windows. At present, RAC is working with Fairfax County Public Schools as they relocate and improve the dangerously sloped accessible parking spaces at Hunters Woods Elementary School. The project will be completed later this month. Pony Barn is now listed on our website as one of our projects, and we would welcome the opportunity to work with you. Please do create accessible parking and accessible route or routes, and replace mulch surfaces so neighbors and guests with disabilities can use Pony Barn Park. Accommodating our fellow residents and their guests is doable, right, and just. Thank you for this opportunity, and thanks to each of you for your volunteering your time, energy, and intellect to serve your fellow Restonians. Thank you.
Thank you, Ken. Well, along those lines, before we call Audrey to make comments, I'd like to read into the record a member, a correspondence we received from Cookie Blitz, who wanted us to make this a part of the record tonight, and I'll read this into the record. "The Fairfax Area Disability Services Board consists of volunteer members appointed to represent and advocate for people with physical and sensory disabilities. I am the Hunter Mill representative appointed by Kathy Hudgens, as well as past chair of the DSB. Our role is to inform, educate, and advise the community, as well as elected bodies, on issues, policies, and barriers related to accessibility and compliance with relevant regulations such as the ADA. In short, to make Fairfax County an ideal place to live and work for everyone. We have been made aware of an ongoing situation at Pony Barn Park, which was slated for much-needed updates in order to make it accessible for people with disabilities or anyone who uses motility aids such as crutches, cane, walker, et cetera. Obviously gravel surfaces are not safe or usable in this regard. The absence of parking and routes that are compliant and accessible is disconcerting. We urge the Pony Barn Working Group and the Reston Association to take these concerns seriously and make the necessary changes in a timely fashion. On a more personal note, I have always been very impressed with the Reston community's reputation and behavior regarding progressive, healthy living. I am disappointed and quite surprised that long overdue, relatively simple changes to this area are being pushed aside. Please take the steps needed to make Pony Barn Park welcoming to all. Thank you for this opportunity to speak. Sincerely, Cookie Heimer Blitz, FA DSB Member, Hunter Mill District." And now I'll ask Audrey Diggs to come forward.
Audrey has arrived.
Okay. We can take her comments at a later time. And with that, I'd like to move on with the agenda. Yes.
Good evening. My name is Erwin Flashman. I live at 1327 Buttermilk Lane. I'm sure that all of you have received a letter from Ray Widdell, who indicated in an email that he sent to me and many others that he was not able to hear this evening. And his email, or attachment, deals particularly with a particular project, which is-
Hook Road.
Hook Road Park. And I'm going to make my comments much broader than his. He raises points about usage, and he raises points about lack of usage, and whether the lack of usage is an indication that money should not be invested in that particular project, or a portion of that project. Particularly the lighting and tennis courts, if their tennis courts are not used, and other kinds of things. You have before you this evening a page and a half of proposed projects, capital projects. And you have a rather large page of projects already apparently approved or scheduled. And it seems to me that the board needs to have some basis for making judgments about the projects. And there ought to be a number of considerations taken into account in making judgments about projects, so that they are measured one against the other, because really they are competing for money, limited resources. And you have to make judgments, and so perhaps you need some factors to be weighed in taking those projects into consideration and making decisions about which ones will be funded and which ones will not. A number of factors off the top of my head come into mind, that is, the status of disrepair or repair, the amount of usage they have, or likely usage they will have, the demand by the community for such facilities, whether it's light or heavy, and the direction in which Reston wants to go in terms of forwarding some of its objectives. My intention is not to give you a full list of all of those factors. It is something that I think you need to do, and to be able to come up with something that helps you to measure all of these projects one against the other, so you have some way of determining how you will make use of the limited resources that we have. Thank you.
Thank you, Erwin. And just in time, Audrey. That's quite all right. That's fine. Please come forward.
Is that a mic?
Yes.
Oh, thank you. Hello. Sorry I made you wait. My name's Audrey Diggs, for those of you who don't know me or have not seen me. Usually I'm scooting around on a four-wheel scooter with a Great Dane, and a son running on either side of it. But today it got crazy and I wasn't able to get here fast enough, so I'm sorry. I live off of Silver Fox Lane, which is right off of Steeple Chase, which is right in front of the Pony Barn. I moved there in, can't think, 15, been there about 15 years. So around 2003 I moved in there. My daughter was one. We didn't play down at the Pony Barn, we didn't go with the friends down to the Pony Barn, we didn't meet with the ladies' club down at the Pony Barn when we did our toddler stuff, because I couldn't get down there. I went through one time and got stuck in the gravel, called my husband from McLean, stuck in the gravel at the Pony Barn. I'll be there in a minute. So then we, I got more adventurous when my son came along, and I got a bigger scooter that I thought could do it. So I went and followed him and his friends down off of the main path and onto the makeshift path that's more like tree roots and dirt. And I flipped myself, getting down. I was like, okay, I flipped myself, I'm laying on my side. My husband, okay, I'm coming from McLean. Now I notified, called the fire department, which before I wasn't sure to even do that. But it would be nice to be able to let him play with his buddies when they all ride their bikes down there, and be able to go down and interact and see what's going on, and use it. And that's it. It's just right across the street from me. I hear people singing and I hear people talking, but I don't, I can't get down there. That's it. So of my two kids, there's still, one's still at Hunters Woods. We still use that area very often. We've been scooted down further to that play area that's down where the creek runs underneath. I can't remember what it's called. It's lovely. But there was a time when I couldn't get to that because the paving wasn't done. But now we use that a lot. But still, it's right across the street. Or we go up to the school and go to the school, which I can't take the dog to. That's it. That's all I have to say. Any questions?
Thank you, Audrey.
Thank you, Audrey.
All right. I hope that helped. Thank you.
Okay, with that, I think we can move on to a status report on 2017 capital projects. Kate and Garrett.
Just thought I would kick it all off. This is one of two sessions that we have planned for the Board of Directors. The first one here on August 7th is solely focused on capital projects, suggested capital projects for 18 and 19. As you'll hear from Garrett and Chris later this evening, the projects that are on this list are need-to-have, not nice-to-have. That's an important phrase that I want everybody to remember this evening when you're hearing about the projects. This is, these are maintenance projects that need to be done to upkeep the facilities. The most important thing, couple of things that I want-
Can I just clarify that? So everything on which lists?
The large lists in your-
And we'll talk about those later.
But which, so we have two lists-
The one in your hand right now.
Okay, so this is the two-
That's a current list.
These are the 2019, and you're saying these are all have-to-have?
Need-to-have, yes. But let me, I, let me go back to my opening statement for you. This is the first time in my history at Reston Association that this level of discussion on the capital is going to be had. Typically, at the budget sessions that we've had, there's been a little bit of time set aside and looking at all of the budgets to talk about capital. Unlike this evening where you've got an entire evening that's dedicated just to capital projects, and going over all the different parameters that the association needs to follow with regard to capital. And I highlight that because one of the first purposes, or one of the first two purposes on the association's, in association's deed as to why the association is here, is to improve, administer, and maintain such property, common area, or other people's property, in neat and good order. And that's really what we're talking about when we're looking at capital projects, making sure that our assets are well maintained. So a lot of information that you're going to be given this evening, no decisions are being asked for you tonight. It's really to soak everything in. There is a checkpoint that we're looking for at the September 18th meeting, where we do want you to begin to make some decisions. Next Monday, you will be getting an overview on the operations budget. And I will reveal a little bit of a secret now, because it'll be in the back of your mind as you're talking, is that operations budget is being presented in such a format that you're going to be under the current assessment level, just so that you know, that that's coming. So I don't want there to be trepidation in the conversations that you have tonight about things that are being requested or added. We are going to be bringing something, a really good product to you next week on the operations side. We've done a lot of work. A lot of us like to save our conversation on that for Monday, next Monday evening. Really want you to focus on capital. You've got all of your subject matter experts in the room, from our treasurer, to our CFO, to our capital projects team, and me contributing here and there for whatever they can't fill in on history. So I just wanted to kick us off from that perspective, and what Garrett wants to do is give you an update on where we are right now with the current projects in 17, because he has a good story to tell.
Thanks Kate. Good evening, everyone. So as you guys already have the agenda in front of you, before I jump into the detailed status update, I wanted to kind of give a highlight of the accomplishments that we've been able to achieve so far this year. As Kate mentioned, you know, capital projects department is a new department for us. I'm, of course, only a few months in. And since getting here, I've attempted to work with the team and implement some changes, hopefully to, you know, really make some progress with the projects that we're executing, as well as how we're executing projects and working with everyone. So first accomplishment is, of course, there in execution. So far this year, we've completed over $850,000 worth of projects, or of our capital budget. That's more than all of last year already, just halfway through the year. And we're on pace to execute over $2 million in work. You know, that's largely due to improved efficiencies and mainly having a department that's dedicated to project execution and working with our consultants and contractors to actually get work done and having attention, full-time attention on project execution. Other is tied to contracting. We wanted to make sure that we really better solidified our contracting standards to make sure that we're protecting the organization when we have these relationships with contractors and vendors who execute this work. So we work with our legal consultants at Odin Feldman to develop new standard agreements for construction or engineering, as well as, I think now we've had two training sessions with staff to make sure that staff are well aware of what our contracting standards should be, what some possible pitfalls there are, and why it's important to make sure that we're operating within, you know, strong agreements between ourselves and any entity working for us. As fiscal committee has seen, and I think as some of you on the board have seen, we're making sure that we, or we implemented some changes in reporting. I'll go over the snapshot here briefly. And now a new addition, our, the capital project forecast. Where now, at this point in the year, we can start to forecast where are we going to be by the end of the year. I think that's something that's a little bit new for the organization, but hopefully that helps to really help everyone to better understand and hopefully have some level of comfort with where we are and where we think we will be with our capital project. Communications and engagement, as we've, I know dealt with this over a series of board meetings and more operations committee meetings, we know that it's very important to make sure that we're engaging with the public, the members who are receiving a lot of these end products, and who may have things to contribute or requests. The project communications plan and website updates that I'll touch on in a minute are ways for the capital department to make sure that we're at least engaging outside of this building, so that, you know, everyone is aware of where are we with capital projects, what have we completed so far, what's due to complete, what's on the list. You know, as much as possible, we want to make sure that we're at least sharing and as transparent as possible with what we're looking to accomplish. And the webpages is one thing I do, did want to highlight. I don't think we've had the opportunity to touch on this in detail with the board. I know we've presented it to fiscal committee and some of the other groups, but just for awareness, there is a capital projects page on the RA website. And recently, besides just having an overview of capital projects and our project execution methodology, we also have a project status option that's, or feature there that's updated on a monthly basis, so you can see what progress are we making throughout the year, number of projects completed, what's scheduled, what's on hold. And if you click on a link, you can actually see the detailed list and see specifically which projects, you know, am I looking for, and is that completed, is it scheduled? What's the status, and what's the cost of that individual project? So hopefully that's, you know, just another positive point for the department to really demonstrate that we're trying to be as transparent as possible. We're trying to reach out and make sure that everyone knows what's going on. For a look ahead for the department, we look to further add additions to the webpage to provide more detail, more information about capital projects, increase the number of communication channels that we have through working with the RA Communications Department. Next year, we look to streamline our procurement process. This year, we have about 38 projects. That's 38 individual contracts and purchase order processes that we've had to go through to make sure that we can execute all those projects. So there are a lot of opportunities in the coming year to combine that work into single, either master service agreements or on-call services contracts. Makes the process more efficient for us, makes our opportunities more attractive for engineering firms or contractors to give us more competitive costs when we can bundle the work that we know that we're going to have for future years or for the coming year. Lost the screen. Big project, of course, that we anticipate completion looking ahead is hopefully the completion of the CSF renovation in the first quarter of next year. We know that's a fairly large project that board recently, or just last week, week before, approved us to move forward with construction. So we look to get that kicked off and completed by the end of March, so that staff will be able to move in and be ready to go before the busy season kicks off next spring. And finally, we look to increase more coordination with other RA departments, covenants and maintenance, as there is a significant connection between capital and covenants activities, as well as maintenance, especially maintenance activities, to further coordinate on and evaluate how- as maintenance, especially maintenance activities, to further coordinate on and evaluate how our departments can work better together to improve efficiencies, identify opportunities. So, in front of you, you have a spreadsheet titled, "The 2017 Capital Project Snapshot." I can go through quickly in detail kind of where we are. I highlighted kind of the fact that we've made progress so far this year with our projects. So, this snapshot is something that we started to distribute to the fiscal committee a few months ago as a part of the financial update. So, I wanted to give you all a, just sort of a quick overview of where we are as well as what kind of goes into the forecast. So, without explaining every column, you know, you can see we have everything listed by category in the far left. Next column is budget at completion. That is the budget that was approved for 2017 for all the items within that category. Next is the estimate at completion. Those are the numbers that we've determined based on actual expenses and actual estimates that we've received. So, you'll notice there may be a variance between the approved budget and the actuals once we've actually started to schedule or execute a project. That goes into the variance column. So, you can see which items are a little bit more than budgeted, which are less than budgeted. But overall, we're operating with a $68,000 positive variance on things that are scheduled to be executed or have been executed versus the actual budget. And as I mentioned earlier, our year-to-date completion, this is actually current as of today, we're at $860,000 in executed work with our estimate to complete or our remaining budget of 3.6 for the entire budget. That's the approved 17 budget, carryforwards, defers, all combined together. In the middle there, the financial percent complete, that's just how much has been spent versus budgeted. And physical percent complete is where we actually are with the combination of the items within each of those categories. So, you can get a good gauge of, you know, our progress. You know, we're about 40% in actual progress on the projects overall.
Sure.
Yeah, one clarification I want to ask you earlier as well is, does it reflect also the invoicing cycle, the fact that you haven't received invoices?
This does reflect that, yes.
It does reflect that.
A lot of the projects that we have, or the contracts that we have set, we may have a small payment upfront, 30%, 25% payment upfront. And then upon completion of the work by said contractor, only then, you know, after we've gone through a punchless process where we evaluate and determine that they've met our acceptance criteria, then that final payment is made. So, some projects are still in that final acceptance criteria process. So, you know, those numbers aren't reflected yet. So, that's a part of the variance that you'll see between the physical percent versus financial.
And do we do holdbacks on some of our invoices?
We do. We do have a retainage.
Yeah, I was going to say, maybe a good example is the one for the pool buildings where we've, it's nearly complete, but we've only got about half of it.
Right. Yeah, there's some, you know, there's some items in there that are just that example.
So, it's not, it's not that we are doing so amazingly against the budget. We could be.
Right, right. It's just that we haven't paid for those items.
It's just, that's where the invoice is.
Yeah, yeah.
So, what are our terms, net 30 or net 60 or?
It depends on the work and the contract. Some vendors, if we have a very short schedule on the work as, you know, the work is probably going to take less than a month, then it's the kind of 30%, 70% payment. For longer term, it's net 30. You know, they bill on a monthly basis and we pay whatever that portion of work that was completed in the previous period during that.
We are pretty much on track, right, where you projected, I don't know, if you were to look at it on a project implementation, you know, from that, at the end of June, you are where you expected to be.
Yes.
Okay.
Which actually is a good segue into the forecast. So, if you look at the gray section there, we have the forecast year-end cost. This is where we expect to be at the end of the year. So, again, this is a summary of all the categories. So, what we've gone, done, done was go through every single project in the 2017 list and of course, for those projects that are complete, we already know what our ending balance is going to be. For those that haven't been completed yet, based on the schedule for those projects, we've identified, okay, this is where we expect to be by December 31 of this year. So, you can see between the forecast year-end cost, if there is, if that year-end cost is less than budget, the next two columns or next three columns help to identify then sort of, you know, what do we anticipate as of now, what is next? So, you have the forecast balance, which would be that difference. And then of that balance, what do we perceive as, or what do we need for a carryforward? So, at the top of the forecast carryforward list, you see 776,000. We don't anticipate that we'll complete CSF by the end of this year. You know, just with the nature and the size of the project, there's no way we can finish it by December. That's scheduled to complete in first quarters, but we do anticipate half of that construction will be done by the end of December and we'll finish the rest in the first quarter. So, you know, that's why you see that as the largest carryforward item on the list. And if, there may be some items where either we've had a savings, we've fully executed the projects, you know, we've executed those projects for less than budget. That difference is anticipated to return to Triple RF. So, you can see, or there may be projects that we haven't executed and don't anticipate to execute this year. And right now, the forecast may be until determined otherwise by the board what to do with those projects. That's anticipated to return to the fund because they're not anticipated to be carryforwards at this time. So, you can see at the end of this year, forecast will be that we execute the 2.2 million in work and we'll have about 1.4 million in carryforward and the roughly 800,000 that would return to Triple RF for use on other projects. So, that's kind of a quick rundown of that status sheet. And again, this is something that we go through in detail monthly with fiscal committee.
Okay.
Any questions in terms?
If not, then we'll move on to the next.
I think we got one.
Yeah. I'm sorry. Julie?
Comment you have under the carryforwards for, oh, sorry. Thank you. Carryforwards from 2016 and prior, and you say completion of Lake Anne Dock and member experience upgrade expected in early 2018. They're two separate items, right?
Yes.
You're not, member experience upgrade doesn't ref?
Yeah, the member experience upgrade.
It's attached to Lake Anne.
It's not attached to that.
Checking.
The member, they're just in the same category. The member experience upgrade is the.
Right track. Yep.
I just wanted clarification since there was some controversy last year about Lake Anne, in the last year, about Lake Anne Dock upgrades.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
So, I, just one comment. I have been spending time on this with both with Robert Wood, Garrett, as well as Kate, and got a lot more detail. If you guys have any questions, feel free to reach out. So, I'm continuing to get into, dive into more detail on many of these things.
Thank you, Schrader. Great.
But hopefully that snapshot helps just in, you have a good summary of what's going on. If there are any more questions, comments, I'll kind of switch gears into the next item, which is the 2018 Triple RF Funding Recommendations Overview. So, just to provide the detail and background, you know, what is Triple RF? This is the designated funds of money to be used for repair replacement of the association's capital assets and late dredging expenses, which is included in the capital list. Triple RF funds cannot be used for operating expenses or new capital asset acquisitions. The balance in the fund consists of annual appropriations from the current assessment, minimum annual Triple RF balance, and an amount for contingencies. The sources for the funds include investment earnings, annual appropriation from the current year's revenues at one-tenth of the forecasted 10-year repair replacement expenditures based upon the latest 10-year repair replacement of capital asset forecasts, or commonly referred to as a 10-year average. It can come from borrowing that's permitted by, or permitted but governed by other RA requirements. There's the surplus dollars that can be allocated from the operating funds into Triple RF by a two-thirds vote of the board. And there's, it can be money that's designated for a given year, less than the full one-tenth of a 10-year or the 10-year average contribution, and that is also, needs to be approved by a vote of the board. Just to kind of give a quick visual, so the Triple RF fund itself is the combination of the annual assessment contribution, investment earnings, and surplus cash. The reserve study, so I know the reserve study has been quite a hot topic since I arrived. And we've had many conversations about it, especially within some of the fiscal committee meetings. As everyone's aware, the reserve study is something that is conducted every five years. The last one was done in 2014. That's what we use as capital as a guide to determine what should be on the list that we'll go through for 18, 19, and years beyond, knowing what we have in our asset portfolio, what is the useful life of those items, what is the anticipated repair replacement cost, and what should be the resulting schedule. Our next one scheduled for 2019, we're beginning to prepare for that now. We know that there are some differences or issues with the 14 study. We know there are some assets missing that should be a part of it. And our intent, you know, just as a sidebar, is to make sure that we're well-prepared for the 19 reserve study by ensuring that we have a thorough list or an exhaustive list of all of our assets. And when we get into that 19 study, it's as accurate as it can be based on what we will know then.
The 2014 study and the costs associated, was there an inflation rate applied to it? Some expected increase?
Inflation is applied throughout the, you know, when we look at the 10-year average. So, we add 3% each year for items. So, if something is scheduled for this year, but we, let's say we need to push it out three years, we add that 3% per year. Or whenever the original study was done, as those items were set within whatever the given years were, that inflation was already a part of the resulting 2014 study.
Thank you.
So, kind of jumping back to the slide, the reserve study is required to be conducted every five years as I mentioned, which is a necessity for us to determine what is our repair replacement of those capital assets. Again, we're making sure that we are well-prepared for a detailed 19 reserve study. And it's used specifically for us, especially as a part of this cycle. It's used to develop the rolling 10-year repair replacement forecast and we'll talk about how the results of that reserve study and how it's morphed since 2014 to now sort of contribute to what the 10-year average numbers are that we'll touch on. And this is, again, reviewed annually by the fiscal committee and staff to determine the sufficiency of the Triple RF balance. And then it should say staff and or CFO. Go ahead.
Schrader.
Question?
Is this a good time for you to talk about how the previous estimates were, are probably short of where they need to be? And you can even use Hookwood as an example. You know, we talked about the lighting and the cabling and those kinds of things.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Just to identify that we are probably down the line, we're going to see some higher costs of replacements, which can then lead to your.
Correct. So, as I mentioned earlier, the previous reserve study is, we've picked up, you know, especially, you know, over the last few months. And you may see on the list, there are some items that we know we own or are part of our portfolio that exists but may not be a part of that reserve study or may not be listed in the reserve study. Or there are items in the reserve study that are underestimated. And it may not necessarily be because there were insufficiencies at the time of the assessment, it just may be, may have been a different methodology. I can't speak to exactly what the process was at that time. But we know just in the example that you brought up, if there is a lighting item in the reserve study and the, there's a significant difference in cost, you know, we can make those assumptions that, well, if you look at the number for, let's say, tennis court lights, the number in the reserve study is specific to what you can see above ground. It's the cost to replace a pole and the shoebox fixture. But what does not include is, is there an anticipated cost to update the actual wiring infrastructure? The reserve study does not include any soft costs. So, if there's engineering design or permitting that's required, that's not a part of the study. So, that's where you'll see some of the differences, differences. And in 19, we're taking that into account. So, hopefully, when we go through this process again, we'll make sure that all of those things are really considered when we get that final product and when we go through this process. So that we have a more realistic.
So, more factors being considered, probably to Schrader's point, is going to mean more money.
More money. Right, that's possible.
Yeah. Like in the recent, one of the recent meetings, maybe it was a board meeting I talked about, you know, when Garrett was presenting, in the financial statements, there is, there is an informational table as a supplement that talks about 67 million, listing all the different assets as a replacement cost. That number will change based upon many of this, you know, the labor costs, the design estimates, printing costs, you know, those kinds of things, like the soft ones.
So, just to, just to give a graphical depiction of, you know, how we've gotten to this point and to provide some background, we put this chart together just to give you a picture of what does that 10-year look ahead look like? What does that 10-year average look like, along with the reserve fund balance? So, at the top of the line graph, that identifies the, at the end of, beginning with first point, the end of 2017, we anticipate a $6.2 million reserve fund balance going into 2018. The green bars going across are the individual year, 10-year average amounts. So, starting in 2018, the 2.91 million, that's the 10-year average of 2018 through 2027. 2019, the 2.99 million is a 10-year average of 2019 through 2028 and so on. So, we have that in a very detailed spreadsheet that we use along with Robert and the finance team to help us determine what number, you know, based on the input of all those red bars. So, the red items are the, what we consider to be the actual estimates of each of those years. In 2018, we anticipate a 2.82 capital budget that we'll go through in detail. In 19, 3.98 and so on, you know, most, once you get past 2019. In 19, 3.98, and so on, you know, most, once you get past 2019, we're sort of back on, you know, what's in the reserve study for each of those years, but 18 and 19 are detailed and have been scrubbed based on what we know, what's real cost, and what do we actually need to accomplish. Some things have been pushed out, some items have come forward, and Chris will actually go through that in detail for you guys in a minute here. But overall, I just wanted to kind of help clarify what you're seeing. It's, you know, when you look at any given year, those two bars aren't a one-to-one comparison. It's a 10-year average compared to what needs to be done in that given year. So you see an average, you know, it looks like we're fairly steady. We have two higher years over the next 10 years, next year in 19, or two years from now in 19, and then in 2025, and that's not necessarily because there is that much of a difference between what we actually anticipate and the reserve study. That is actually what's scheduled in the reserve study. Those are just larger years in comparison to what is the typical 10-year average contribution. So hopefully, that helps, and just to kind of add some additional detail, you see, we still have the funds going across the top, the reserve fund balance. This is now just looking at the next five years. You know, starting with that 6.2, you see the bottom line is what we have is the unencumbered balance. This is sort of the, this is the amount in triple R F that's not tied to a specific project to date, and, or it's, it may be, as I highlighted in the snapshot, it may include money that's going back into the fund that will help to sort of make sure that we have enough funds when we get to a year like 2019, like 2025, where they're significantly higher than your 10-year average contribution amount, so that we know we can still execute the work in that year without necessarily asking residents to pay significantly higher assessment just to execute what we know we need to get done. And that, excuse me, meets, you know, the definition of the 10-year average. The intent was to make sure that there wasn't a significant impact on the residents to the assessment value, if you could kind of make it a fairly, hopefully, a consistent, steady amount in terms of the capital contribution to the assessment, so that when we get to those significant years, you know, the blow isn't, you know, right at once, or a surprise for anyone. So hopefully, those two graphs in concert kind of help to make sure everyone is a little bit more comfortable about, you know, where we are with the funds, and, you know, when we do have those higher years or larger project years, that they don't necessarily directly correlate to a significant ask of the members to be able to fund them.
Basically, it stabilizes your assessment, keeps it at a steady, smooth level, as opposed to jumping up and down, volatility basically.
Right.
John?
I know they do this a lot in Europe. They stress full lifecycle cost estimating for major facilities, and that is, sometimes you're not just repairing and replacing, sometimes you have to abandon, decommission, demolish, and not replace. Do we have any assets of a type where we would have to do something like that, where there could be a cost in decommissioning, demolishing, disposing of stuff? I don't know of any.
I'm not aware of any asset that we have that would fit within that category. Everything that I'm aware that we have is something that we're maintaining because it's an asset that is utilized by members, whether it's a pool, a facility...
But for example, no big asbestos abatement facing us somewhere?
None that we're aware of, unless it's any other historical perspective.
I know that with some facility improvements in the past, and I know Larry will be proud of me for saying this, having done this before, if you take, for example, Glade Pool or Uplands Pool, when we redid those, we gutted them completely and reset them, because we changed the footprint of the pool facilities. We did something similar with Dogwood Pool when we redid it. So the answer is yes to the question, and...
I'm sorry, the answer is yes, Larry?
Yes, to your question on the cost of demolition, if we were to do that for particular projects.
To abandon something.
Correct. Is it a part of, has it been a part of the reserve study in the past? I don't believe so. It's just been, if we were going to replace it, here it is for the item. It did not take into consideration what Garrett has mentioned on other costs that need to be considered.
I'm talking about instances where there wouldn't be replacement, because if there's replacement, usually include demo replacement costs. But I've encountered things where we have abandoned something and not replaced it, and we face sizable demolition, decommissioning, and disposal costs, and I just want to make sure that we don't have anything like that, which wouldn't show up presumably on a repair and replacement, because it's neither repair nor replacement.
Right. In my experience, I've seen that with utilities, more so than recreational assets, but you could have that situation.
But we don't have it.
I don't either.
You need to come up to speak, because we need to capture it on the microphone. There we go.
A little bit of clarification. So we did have two facilities that we shut down. So we shut down Lake Anne Pool, and also Southgate Pool. Now, on both of those, we had to get an interpretation from Fairfax County, because on the approved rezoning and final development plan, it specifically stated swimming pool and tennis court. So we had to get interpretations for Southgate. We did a development plan amendment that required us to actually put in other facilities. So the decommissioning of a facility is not a fait accompli of just abandoning it. So there's a pretty substantial process that we would have to go through to accomplish that, including, you know, getting an interpretation from Fairfax County. So just want to clarify that.
Excellent point. Thank you. So that is something that, these are just things that we're collecting, that we know when we go to do the 2019 study, that we need to be keeping in mind to include a general standard list of additional considerations when we're putting the study together.
Now, that full lifecycle cost concept is something to hold before us.
Thank you.
That is pretty common, and just from my perspective, if we had to decide on a decommissioning of a large asset, the best place to put that in would be adding it to the reserve study.
Yeah.
Logical place, but...
But right now, our assumption is not that we anticipate decommissioning of any asset when we go into the reserves.
Correct.
All right. So, last slide here, in, at the July 27 fiscal committee meeting, without objection, fiscal committee recommended, based on our presentation of the 10-year average amount for 2018, they approved the recommendation to fund triple R F in the amount of the 2.9 million for 18. Again, this is a, something that you as a board can consider for your September 18 meeting, whether to accept that recommendation or to approve another amount. So just wanted to make that clarification. If there are no questions before we move on...
Could I just, just to make sure, because we've had some communications about this, the Hook Road total on the list here? That simply, that does not include some of the enhancements that will be discussed in the course of the community process?
Correct. Those are items that are scheduled per the reserve study for those years.
And I also...
And Chris will go through this in less than detail. One second.
I also want to be mindful that we, it's a biennial budget, we are required to put before you, especially with capital, you know, the anticipated expenses for both years. When it comes down to it later this fall, we're really only interested in the approval of the 18 list, but we have to show you what's coming in 19, because we've done our due diligence. So, again, it's going to be for operating, it's going to be the 2018 operating that we're looking for, you know, your approval of whatever it ends up being, whatever you all are comfortable with. Same thing with the capital list, so please do keep that in mind. And as Chris goes through the list, you'll get an explanation of thought process and how we went through it. And again, the list that he's going to talk with you about is different than what we've done in prior years, because the items, the amounts that were on the list were, what were in the reserve study. And this year, what's been done is a thorough research and scoping and talking with contractors in what would it cost to do. Sorry for taking any thunder I might have stolen from you.
All right. Chris? This large spreadsheet that you have, Chris, you make our operations manager will kind of give an overview of what you have in front of you.
So before you have a listing of the projects that we've identified as need to be done. Much of these are actually captured from the reserve study. It does a pretty good job at actually helping us schedule when projects need to come up for replacement, and it's broken up, similar to how the reserve study is done in terms of categories. We have, you know, administrative equipment, multipurpose courts, pool buildings, and then jumping on to the other side, we have, you know, tennis courts, and another item at the very bottom, which is long-range planning and design. Focusing in on 18, the projects that are highlighted in kind of the peach color are projects that are predominantly the Lake Throw renovation, are projects that have been lumped together, so they kind of have interconnected and relationships between each other, so they really kind of work together and would need to be done together ideally. The projects that are in yellow, such as the Lake Anne Dam, are projects that are kind of still in limbo, if you will, we're trying to find out more direction from the state on requirements to meet the Lake Anne Dam requirements for the high-hazard dam classification. I believe it's next week we might be meeting with them.
Next Wednesday.
So we're hoping to get more information soon after that, to find out exactly what direction we'll have to take.
Chris, are all the yellowed items in limbo because they're, because of discussions with the state?
Some, not all. A couple other ones that are also highlighted, such as the dredging projects. We are waiting to get back results from a bathymetric study that has already been conducted, should be getting those results back soon as well, and those will help dictate how much we will actually need to fulfill the recommendations of that survey to remove the sediment out of it in order to prevent the lakes from kind of filling in over time from sediment. Two other projects down there in other site features, the retaining walls, we have an engineer that's going to be doing an assessment of those two pieces to help give us a better idea of replacement. Some items, you know, from the reserve, it only called out for six grand or 58, but just from historical knowledge and expertise, we can tell that doesn't look right. So if we need to, we'll go out and get a better assessment in order to find out exactly how much it would cost. But like Kate said, everything else, you know, everything on this list has been vetted through with a lot of discussions amongst staff, and talking with contractors, a lot of phone calls, a lot of meetings. I've met on-site with pretty much contracted on every single one of the swimming pools and tennis courts personally, because that's more in my background. We've gone through all of those and kind of assembled the list, got real-world numbers that, taking account everything, including soft costs, or additional items that might have been missed otherwise. There's a couple on here that you might have noticed there isn't a number tied to it, it's just empty. Those are because, unfortunately, it missed the little note page. Those are projects that were deferred from a previous year, so we have, you know, a good example here, the Hook Road Backstop 1 and 2, that money was actually collected in 2015 in our vault. It was not performed, it was deferred, so that's one that's already been collected, so we don't want to try to collect money at the end for the project. What we're going to do is take that deferred fund, move it up to that year, and then spend that money in that year for that project. Heard me wrong, Robert.
The same thing on the Lake Audubon ramp, the concrete there, that's BD5?
That is a project that is, we're still discussing, but it might actually be moved off the list altogether. This is just as of this morning, there's a few more details, we can still kind of narrow out. The ramp, we're evaluating whether or not it needs to have a full replacement. We're still trying to investigate it, but right now, it looks like it may not need replacement right now, so we'll be moved up to a future year.
And just to kind of make some clarification, that's the intent of the reserve study, and the good part about this process for capital is, when we get to the given year where we're planning for next year, we look at what's in the reserve study, as Chris has stated, and we determine, all right, is it, does it make sense for us to repair, replace this item this year? If not, we'll push it to a future year. If so, we will make sure that we get a more detailed cost, so we're not just taking whatever the number is in the reserve study for these items. You can see, between 18 and 19, these numbers, as Chris mentioned, are detailed estimates that we've either gotten from our own unit cost experience, because they're frequent items that we were confident in the cost for, or, you know, Chris has met with a contractor and gotten real bids for. So, you know, if there's concern between, you know, whether or not the reserve study appropriately identified the amount for either of these two years, that's kind of taken off the table, because we know these numbers are real.
You'll notice in 2019, we mentioned before about how it's kind of back heavy, a little bit heavier on that end versus 18. A lot of that has contributed towards, we have some major dredging projects going on in 19, as well as Lake Throw. In 2018, we have an item for Lake Throw, which is just the planning and design phase. We'll start developing the, plan to actually do it, and then 19, we have a lot of the items that would be involved with that project listed in 19, so that's why it's a little heavier.
Do you know what the peach-colored ones add up to? I think they're all the Lake Throw ones. I mean, I can sit here and add them, I did my calculator. So for those in the audience, every, oops, sorry, Sherri's got a question.
Yes.
So I'm looking at the, I think I'm looking at the 2018, 19 capital project, was it correct?
Correct.
Is the long list?
Yes.
So are all these items that are listed, are they coming out of the reserve study? Are these the ones that were coming from there, plus the things that you guys have identified that need to be looked at?
Yeah, I would say the majority of the lists are items that were already identified in 18 or 19, per the reserve study, and those items that we've also verified that, yes, in either of these two years, these items do need to be repaired or replaced. And added to that is our items on this list that we've delayed from previous years, either they were scheduled in 2015 or 16, and we put them off until now, or they're items that we know are failing ahead of schedule, and may have been scheduled for 2020 and beyond, that we needed to pull into 18 or 19 to make sure that we're addressing either safety concerns or function concerns for the residents.
Answer your question, please.
I'm trying to reconcile the reserve study amount that we have on this spreadsheet to be serve amounts shown on the R R F kind of bar graph, line graph.
Okay, so the...
Corley?
No, they do not. And I'll, if you want me to, I'll go back to that slide real quick. I'm not sure, did you see this online? Okay.
So you went back to slide 13, Sherri.
So if you go back to slide 13, the, for 18, the 2.82...
It will correlate, if you flip to the other side, Sherri, you'll see the capital estimate with contingency, 2.816.
That's the 2.82.
So that's the 2.82 in the red column that you see. And then the next year, you... So that's the 2.82 in the red column that you see. And then the next year, you see 3.98, that's the 3966. There's a small variance, but that's really what it should be adding up to.
Yeah, this spreadsheet is more current than the PowerPoint. So those are the only two numbers that directly correlate to what you see there. If you're concerned with the 2.9 and the 2.99, the reserve funding, that's, again, that's the 10-year average amount. So, you know, when you look at the 291 for 18, that's the average of the reserve studies or the estimates over the 10 years. So not the 2.4, that doesn't directly tie into that.
Okay.
Answer your question.
Yeah, okay. So we don't really have to be worried, well, I can ask the question, do we have to be worried when we show a variance of 1.1 in 2019? Since we're talking about averages in the reserve study, that should all average out, right?
Yeah, right. The two columns are not, the two bars are not apples to apples. They're different. They're different numbers.
Okay.
I can explain to you later, yeah.
Again, for my edification, how do we handle the items, say, on the 2017 capital project snapshot, the multi-year capital projects that may get pushed into 18, 19? How are we going to manage that if that gets, some of those get pushed into the future? Do things fall off the 2018 and into the 19, and the 19 off?
No.
Okay. We assume that we've allocated the funds for it?
The assumption is anything that carries forward is executed in the next year.
Because the funds were already allocated.
But it's not included in that. Right now, the focus is what are we going to schedule for 19 based on what needs to be done?
What do you need to contract? What do you need to do the RRF score?
And then, you know, the carryforward listing is completely separate. Just as you see it on the snapshot, you see the separation at the bottom or the middle of that spreadsheet, those rows of, you know, what was previously identified for 17 versus the carryforward or the deferred items.
Well, it was already funded, right?
Right.
So it's just a deferred payment in essence, or we're carrying.
Yeah, I question it because the idea of that we funded things, but we won't release the cash for them. So how do you reconcile that? Example, Pony Barn. We funded it, but we haven't agreed to release the cash for it.
Yes, yeah.
Right.
How do we...
That money will come back, will be released at the end of this year, back into the RRF fund as unencumbered funds.
Okay.
If you choose not to do anything else.
Exactly. So that's the...
But we can choose to push it into next year to get it done, or...
We can.
Okay. It doesn't have to go back in there if we decide to do the work.
So when we start something, it becomes a carryforward, assuming you have a, you know, say 300,000 for something, right? We start the project, we encumber the 300,000.
Yeah.
Otherwise, we'll release it.
Okay.
And that's the analysis that I'm still working on. So when we, before our, September 18, we'll see, we'll make a decision.
And the other thing is we're bound by the fiscal calendar. So if there are projects that, you know, for scheduling, we can't start until near the end of the year, we already know they're automatically going to be carryforward projects because there's no way we can fully execute before New Year's Eve. So that, at least when you refer back to the snapshot, that's what we've sort of made sure that we were able to forecast. So CSF was my example. We're not going to rush building it just to not have a carryforward, but we know that that project will just complete into the next year.
Right, okay.
But it doesn't impact our ability to execute
This budget.
the newly identified items for 18.
Because it's already been budgeted.
It's already in process.
Gotcha. Thank you.
And one of the things that we've been trying to do is keep you up to date on these projects. So you see Garrett almost on a monthly basis, the board has ever since he has arrived, to get a report out on projects, especially the larger ones. But as we get closer to the end of the year, you're going to get more regular reports on the 2017, how are we doing? This is just kind of, we're mid-year, so it was important for him to say, here's where we are so far on that. But you'll get another one. But we are required, and we have been doing over the years, a report out in December of every year to let the board know what the carryforward projects are. The ultimate goal is to not have many. That's what we don't want to have. That's been an issue over time, is that we've carried forward a number of projects because we didn't have the right resources in place to get them done. So the things that he's earmarked so far for carryforward for 17 are because they literally can't physically get done. We started them, but we can't do it. Or we're waiting for board direction, like as such as Pony Barn on that.
But most of them are schedule-related rather than, you know, resource-related.
Now they are.
Yes, now they are.
Are there any more questions on the 2018-19 capital?
We had one more answer.
No, I'm not done with my calculator.
So it's 989,333. So that is the figure that we have.
Say it again.
That's 989,333.
For 2019?
Yeah.
Plus 20, 2018 and 2019 combined?
Yes.
Okay.
That's all directly related to Lake Throw.
Right.
Any more questions or comments on that topic? If not, let's move on to the member and staff 2018 capital budget request. And Kate, can you give us some background as to how this was developed?
Sure. The, one of the first things that we do in January, February, at the beginning of the year is let our membership know that we're getting ready to begin a biennial budget development process and make sure they've got a way to give us their feedback on things that they would like to see. We try to advertise that as much as we can throughout the course of the year when we're doing a biennial budget development. Since January, we've been collecting member comments. And what the board has before them is 2018, 2019 capital budget board considerations. It's on a, it's on a letter-sized sheet, front and back, and this only has to do with the requests that came in with regard to capital. The board will receive on next Monday all the requests having to do with operations. Like expanded pool hours. Expanded pool hours, wherever the case might be. These are just capital in nature. The way the information is organized is if we received more than one, you'll see in parents, you know, as in the very top one on bathroom access at tennis courts, we received 14 individual comments related to that. So we tried to put the things that we received lots of up at the top. And then if you don't see a number associated with it in parents, that means it was a single ask, so to speak. What staff did is they put it together with an estimated expense where they actually, they tried to put a little work in, just as they did with the 2018-19, this is what we need list. They did some research to find out what it would cost to implement the request and what the related assessment impact was if you were to choose to do that, and what the funding source would be. So Garrett talked a lot this evening about the triple RF in the, and that's where we're putting money aside. There are also some projects listed, starts about member suggestion number 10, on what we call CARF, and that's the Capital Asset Acquisition Fund. That is not funded out of the triple RF. That would be coming from an assessment. It would be something we would assess for, as opposed to paying for it out of that triple RF fund. Or you could borrow for it, or you could use surplus operating cash if you so choose to do that. So those are, those are the funding sources for this particular laundry list of items that came from the membership. I will, I'm going to let staff go through this with you so in case you have any questions about it. But the full listing of all of these are within the Dropbox folder that you have for the 2018-19 budget. All of the member suggestions are there. We were updating those on a regular basis. They're also vetted along the association's website, so you can see where these came from. But the full information, Sabrina took the time to package those so you could see what they are, so that you have an idea of what the cost, the total estimated expense above and beyond the list, what Robert, sorry, what Garrett gave you, Robert's sitting next to me, couldn't help but say his name, was a little over $1 million. And what the assessment impact would be is about $47.77. Again, not interested in any way, shape, or form tonight in getting the board's input on these. We want to give you time to think about it and come back in September and on the 18th during your meeting then, and give us some feedback on what you think.
And number, and number 19 comes from Director Bitzer, is that correct?
Yes, that, yeah.
Round about.
Round about. Do you want me to give you the background on that?
Sure.
There are two clusters on Lake Audubon that we have been in dialogue with and meeting with, that their property actually goes from their cluster down to the lake. And we have trail easement between their property, and they've been having some issues with unwanted visitors and use of their docks and boats and crime and things like that. What came to light was the fact that in either of our two lakes, Thoreau or Audubon, we do not have a dock that, the public access, basically, dock. And so people think that these docks are public docks.
By the cluster.
Yeah.
I see.
Yeah. And so the thought, in that conversation the other night with members from those two clusters, was what would it cost to possibly install two public access docks where people could fish? A lot of fishing goes on in both of those lakes. So that's the background on those. I do not know whether or not we have, I think we have public access dock on Lake Newport, if I remember correctly.
There's also an access dock on Thoreau. It's closest to Thoreau Pool.
Right.
And...
Right. Audubon, do we have one on Audubon, Larry?
We used to. It got blown out in a storm.
Right, right. But it seemed particularly more important on Audubon because of the proximity and the trail with the lake. So that's where that came about.
So Kate, I want to make sure I understand how things find their way onto the sheet. It's, there's no filtering done. If Joe Smith asks something to be on, you put it on.
Correct.
Joe's a member. Which, and that's fine, but it reminds me that we, the board, have not yet had the discussion that at least initially several months ago, we said we'd like to do, and that is the idea of setting up budget guidelines and budget criteria, criteria for filtering, potential costs and potential investments. And we've not had that conversation, you know, what, for example, a budget guideline can be in the form of, we don't want to exceed such and such a assessment, or such and such an expenditure level. But then also criteria, which Irwin actually got into, and I have my own criteria that I like to use, which we need not go into here, but how do we weigh, how do we balance competing claims for resident association money? And I think we need to have that sometime, certainly before the September 18 meeting, it would seem, seem to me.
That's how these things were...
What are we going to do?
Absolutely.
And assets go on. Well, in essence, we'll be doing that when we consider whether or not any of these should go on.
Well, and we will, we'll be forced to on the spot, but the question is, will we have had a thorough and thoughtful laying out of what factors we want to use to weigh these things? It's better, it seems to me, at least to have a preliminary, you always learn more as you go along, so you refine your principles, but at least you try to have some principles before you start the filtering, it seems to me. Does that make sense?
Yeah, it makes sense. I'm just wondering when that's going to happen.
So one of the things that I would suggest is that to tee up these things, to give ourselves enough time, establish first a process, you know, a set of criteria that we want to look at in terms of how many people does it benefit? What is it going to cost to install, establish something like this? What is it going to cost to operate those things on an annual basis, right? What is the life cycle? I think we haven't established those factors as yet. I think maybe that's one of the things that Irwin was referring to as well. So I think, I would say that we first establish those guidelines and also have a process to give and message that, so that people, you know, make these requests well ahead of time. And we have a little bit of time for the staff also to, you know, to come up with any data that might actually be useful for us, right? And I think right now, to your point, we don't have enough time to get into that, but we'll do our best.
And I think, you know, laying out those criteria.
Yeah.
And then inviting member comment on the criteria, you know, they may say, well, that's good, but this doesn't really make sense. And that we may be convinced that we should refine our criteria further.
Or that there's an imbalance within the community that all were increasing assets in certain areas and neglecting others because perhaps the members are more vocal in those areas.
Exactly.
Yep, exactly.
I might also suggest that as we look at these, just Sherri.
Sherri, listen to something.
I might also...
I know I sound like a broken record on this topic, but I think we also, as a board, have to think about what we're going to stop doing, what we can actually not do, you know? And that's a bigger conversation, and, you know, maybe that's not for today or even on the 18th, but I know it's easy to say all the things we want, but somebody's got to start talking about what we can stop, because money is not limitless. So if you put something, I think John Bowman always says this, if you put something on the bus, something has to come off the bus. And what are those things going to be?
Yeah.
And that's a board thing. I mean, it's a community, it's a community question. It's a tough question because nobody wants to give up things, but it's an important question. And some, one board, some day, is going to have to fight that bullet. Why not us?
So the other thing I was going to say...
Sherri, I concur with that. I think, I'm hoping we can put some thought maybe in the October meeting to talk about things we're going to stop doing and then, you know, lay that out publicly and let the membership come and tell us why that's a bad thing and why they love particular projects. But make clear to them, hey, you know, it's not limitless. And if you want us to hold our assessments in line, we have to, we have to be scrutinizing about this.
Yep. Julie?
The board talked about last year about how much we spent. And I'm not saying that we should not do this, but, you know, we're spending 300-plus thousand dollars on cutting our meetings and stuff like that. Is that something we should be doing? Is that what the community wants us to be spending money on? Yeah, that's just one example. But when you see these member suggestions, they're great. And it's one person, or maybe two people, or maybe 10 people, but there's 20,000, 60,000 people out there, 20,000 households. How do we know these are the big things? And I don't have an answer for that. I'm just concerned that we don't have, we don't have everything we need. And I know we have time to get some of this stuff, but I am concerned about the stuff we're going to take off the bus.
Yeah.
In order to put these things on the bus.
That's why we need to talk about criteria and guidelines before we start actually cutting and adding things, I think.
And as part of the process, right?
Okay, can I say something yet?
Julie, you're next.
I've been trying to speak. What I was going to point out is several of the items on this member suggestion have to do with what we are looking at in Parks Recreation. And we opt to, you know, rely as well on our advisory committees to see what input they might have to some of these. Even though maybe 14 or 10 or whatever took the time to comment, it doesn't necessarily reflect that there aren't more there, people there. But they may also be able to comment and say, well, you know, the tennis working group doesn't really think we need this, right? So I know that there's another PRC meeting in August. I don't know the date yet. I haven't heard it from Laura. But so my expectation would be that the PRC would have a shot at looking at this list and seeing how they feel about it. And I think we have to keep in mind, yes, I know we have to take stuff off the bus when we put stuff on the bus, but I think we're also at a point where we're trying to look to that next 10 years, next five years, 10 years, of what are the amenities that we need for our community. So sometimes you have to spend a little bit more to get it to where you want. Okay, thank you.
All right.
So exactly how shall we lead up to this discussion? I mean, we could, we could... I mean, we could, we could, somebody could be the recipient of suggestions and...
I think that that's a good idea. I think criteria is very important for you to have. I think we took our first crack at putting it together for you.
Sure.
I've heard some things around the table that I think will be helpful for staff to get started on. I know that our treasurer wants to hold a meeting soon in September...
In September, yeah.
To go over this as well as some, as well as some operating items, but I think that some of the criteria that I've heard of how many people does it affect, what district is it in, what's the life cycle, what would be the maintenance on something like this, aren't already good criteria that we can consider in all of this and start assembling.
Perhaps, John, you could get with Shritar and give him the benefit of that and the rest of the board to be able to weigh in.
And part of my, just to add to that, thank you, is that, you know, at least my goal is even to, you know, to present the capital projects list during the public meetings in detail. I intend to do, you know, as exhaustive as required with the public and let them weigh in. And one of the things we are considering is also maybe to establish a tool for people to actually provide real-time feedback. You're part of an email that I sent to, you know, at least some of the board members, so to establish some way for public to actually to get back on many of these things, as well as existing things that we intend to do, whether it's Oak Road or, you know, other kinds of changes that we want to make, like improvements. So hopefully, we can get to that by September 14. But yes, look forward to it.
Question. What, where does maintenance on public art fall? That's not a capital budget item, is it?
It would be operating.
Operating, okay.
Maintaining something.
Okay. And hopefully, you know, I know we have the Lake House Community Meeting on the 10th of September, that we're hoping to disseminate information about pools and our cost on those and desires and stuff. Maybe we'll get some feedback there, too.
Just to provide a high-level overview of the list real quick, and I can at least close this part out. There are some items on that list where there is some opportunity for other funding. So on the first slide, you see there are those few items. Friends of Ruston is considering support for items two through four, skipping down to items 20 through 24. These are items that were either recommended by, or there was some level of commitment or promise that there could be funds made available from Ruston Youth Baseball for those items. So just as you're going through your considerations, that's also another factor, are there other funding sources that may be available for any one or group of items listed? And then lastly, there's a staff suggestion that I think is, yeah, it's on your printout. That's an additional item that was suggested by staff. This is the addition of a boardwalk to Butler Pond Gazebo. Right now, it's to be determined because we need to sort of figure out what is the possible scope, what other soft costs or factors do we need to sort of consider for that item.
Garrett, where is that located?
Send someone else.
It is the furthest, farthest on west of Ruston Parkway, right toward 7.
Okay, I know exactly what you mean, yeah, yeah.
But that just kind of highlights the list, so you can go through. I don't know if you need me to go through line by line, but it sounds like you are comfortable with what's there, and we'll discuss that. So just to give you guys a recap of what you have in front of you in terms of decisions. One is the approval or determination of a recommended Triple RF contribution amount, the approval of the 18 project list, 18 specifically, and finally, of course, the determination of what of this list, if anything, do you want to add to the 18 or 19 list for us to consider executing? Clear with that?
Very clear.
That concludes our presentation of this.
Let me just comment again on John's suggestion about budget guidelines. You know, I think to the extent we can do it, it's great, but sometimes the guidelines actually come with the adoption of the budget, and the guidelines that are essentially lessons learned that carry over for the next year. So we'll see what we can do, but clearly, that would be one way of approaching it. Are there any other comments, suggestions?
It might simply be a series of questions if they pass those tests, right?
Mm-hmm, yep.
To what Kate's already begun.
Yeah.
To have that list of questions that might get us started.
Yes. Any other questions or comments? If not, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Prose nay. Motion carries. You're adjourned.